Committee of the whole meeting. Do I need a motion to reconvene at all, or are we good to go?
I think it wouldn't hurt to do a motion, just to be safe.
Okay, do I have a motion to reconvene? I have a motion from Commissioner Lundin and a second from, well, I guess we'll back to Councilman. Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion to reconvene carries five zero. Alright, moving on to E six then, E O C discussion. So, this was one other one that I had asked to add to the agenda, the Emergency Operations Center. I think right now, and I don't know a ton about it, but from what I understand, we share with Cambridge, right? Is, or we have some access to the county center, or kind of, but not really, or?
Well, new information, Chief Myers and myself did meet with the Sheriff Cyberlich and some of people on his team, including Emergency Management, with their captain, who does their emergency management work there. And I do think that it's different than what we knew about yesterday, or even before. So, just a little bit of background for the rest of the council members, as we, as the city did have an agreement with Isani County since about two thousand seven, that we had the ability to use the E O C at the government center at Isani County should something happen to our facilities here. About two years ago, in March of two thousand twenty-one, we were told, Chief Myers and myself were told by the current at the time Sheriff and County Administrator, that they were recommending to the Commissioner Board to dissolve that because the E O C for the county moved over to the Sheriff's Department. So, we were kind of left hanging. Chief Myers and myself has been working on this to forge new partnerships with the city of Cambridge and other entities. However, we needed to get to where we needed to be should, and hopefully never, we need to have an E O C to be established. Chief Myers and I met, like I said, today, and we're very hopeful that there's going to be some new changes. And they were very, very positive about working with all the cities within the county. So, a different message than we had heard before in terms of emergency management. Not just the E O C, but also the training that we used to get, and we haven't gotten for years, and some of the other items that we were lacking here from the county.
Okay. So, and I don't know, I mean, is that, is that good enough for what we want, or do we want something else? I mean, I know that there's certain places where they're doing like mobile, you know, centers and stuff like that, that you can, you know, if you had to evacuate an area, or that kind of thing, that you have the ability to, to still have a center to work from. I mean, in your guys' opinion, I mean, is, if we were able to have a better relationship with the county and know that we can use that space, is that sufficient enough?
I think that's a good idea, working with the county, but I still think we have to be self-sufficient. Me and City Administrator would have been talking about that for about the last year and working towards that. I haven't heard back, you know, I've applied for some grant funding for some of that equipment through Department Homeland Security. Yeah, I just emailed them again to see if we, where that stands. And that was just specifically for E O C and trying to do, you know, we'll utilize some of that facility at our new P D, but the actual, for us, it would be more of the mobile, because even if we did pack up and move up to, say, Cambridge or the Sheriff's Office, we'd want workstation, mobile stuff to be able to do so. So, your answer to your question is, yeah, the county, I don't think is, we don't want to stand at that level and just rely on somebody else. We need to make sure that we're self-sufficient within our city as well, and so that's what we want to work towards.
And I think now, given the time that Chief Myers specifically, but I myself have worked on this over the last year and a half, two years, is that if we're not able to secure funding by these grants that he's been applying for, it's going to come before the council to allocate some funding for him as Emergency Management Director for the city to be able to implement some things, because we just don't have any funding allocated for that.
How's those grants looking?
I have no idea. So, for example, we just closed out a two thousand twenty-one Homeland Security Grant at the end of June two thousand twenty-three. So, if that's any indication on how well, how fast that the wheels of state work.
When did you apply for those?
I would have applied for that in two thousand twenty.
Oh, for the Emergency Operations Center stuff?
No, for that one, this one was actually, it was for twenty, I would have applied in two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, we should be getting somewhat close, hopefully.
It should be out there, and part of the problem is that grant administrator has changed over. I found that out, closing the other one out. So, I did request a status update to see. And that would, that would give us everything, that'd just give us a good start, and we try to keep on knocking on that door the best we can.
Sure. And what do you, do you have any ideas on, you know, what type of equipment we need and what the costs would look like to put a trailer or something like that together that?
I mean, for what I put together for that last grant was our bare minimum to run our own E O C, which is mobile unit stuff. And we're, that was around forty-three thousand dollars.
Oh, that's not that bad.
And then, including that, we had some training stuff, trying to get some funding for it too, so.
Okay, yeah, well, that's, that's way cheaper than I was expecting.
Yeah, and that's for the infrastructure, for like an actual facility, for our new P D, not necessarily a trailer or anything else.
That wasn't the mobile option.
That's just the equipment that you would need to outfit, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, then if you want to do a trailer, then you're looking at the cost of that, and, you know, probably heat and insulation and A C. Well, we've got vehicles that can pull a trailer.
You'd probably, I see a lot of places going away from the trailers and getting a self-sufficient mobile piece of equipment.
Like a truck?
R V or a van.
Old FedEx truck or something of that, okay.
Okay, alright, well, yeah, so, I mean, it sounds like we're kind of, at this point, we've got our, our nose to the grindstone, and we're working on, waiting to hear back on it.
Yeah, and we're very optimistic with the, these conversations with the county. Three years ago, the county was an asset for every entity within the county for emergency management, even these grants. So, if we want to grant stuff, the county would pull them all together and supply them, so that was an asset. It hasn't been for the last three years with some of the stuff she said, as far as the removal of that agreement. But going forward, I think the new sheriff administration is, they're trying to pick up the pieces, and we talked to them. They're trying to actually put pieces together from two thousand twenty-one, right? Because they got to start putting things together that fell through the cracks before they can move forward. But they do want to work with and be the asset that they were before, so that's a positive thing. But I think it's a good learning thing for everybody involved that we still need to be self-sufficient, because we don't know what's going to happen. Let's say they get to be a good asset, and who knows, in another three years, change in administration, and it changes again. So, it's a good thing for us to keep moving on that self-sufficiency.
Yeah, for sure.
So, I have a, maybe a little bit of a different idea based on what you just said. The County Park Board, we actually partnered with two other counties to buy a trailer for equipment for like skiing, and then it goes, it's rented out as needed to each county. Would it be possible to maybe partner with other cities and have one trailer that, say, if the Bram P D burns down or something crazy happens, they can use it? I mean, the chance of two departments needing it at the same time, and even if they did, I mean, is that something that could be more economically feasible? Because I look at the, the budget meeting we're about to have tonight, and the P D budget is honestly insanely high. It's a lot of money, and I would hate to keep putting money into it out of our taxpayer money. So, I don't know if that's something that's been considered, even though it's not totally self-sufficient or reliable for yourself.
There was a county-wide asset three years ago, which was a twenty-some-foot condition, emergency operations trailer, vacant, meaning it was open and decided to bring your stuff. I'm assuming they don't even know if they have that asset anymore. We can see, so.
I think from my perspective, I think that that's a great idea, and we definitely, I mean, Chief Myers, I will help Cambridge and Bram, whether the county helps or not.
Yeah, pass, just bypass the county.
But if they have the unit and we need it, now we're back to where we were. So, I mean, obviously, we would trump it, but that doesn't help. Everyone needs at least a little bit of their own to be able to go through a crisis. And I understand what you're saying about the P D budget, and I know that emergency management is within P D, because Chief Myers is Emergency Management Director, but it almost is separate. It's a whole nother, almost like a department within a department when we look at budgeting things. It's just for those terrible times that you got to plan for the worst, unfortunately, so you are a hundred percent prepared.
A tornado that starts in Isani goes clear through Cambridge up to Bram.
But your trailer is going to be here and get destroyed anyway. I mean, you're going to have to store and maintain a trailer or whatever, and that's going to get hit by the same thing that a building is going to get hit by, unless you store it in another state.
Who knows, one house could be standing, you know, and the next one's completely demolished.
Right, I just.
And I think it's, a trailer really gives you an advantage, and if you have to evacuate an area because of a train derailment or something like that, that you can pick it up and move out of the area, and you still have your, your stuff. And so, I mean, a trailer, I mean, obviously, in, not every situation do you need a trailer, but there's, if you're going to have a room set up for that purpose, it makes sense to be able to move it if you, in certain situations, might need to, you know.
I just see it as a capital.
But I like the idea, like you said, of pitching in and sharing one.
Because the chance that all three or four of the cities are going to need it at the same time is next to none, I would think. And the fact that, I mean, if we were to buy one, you have a, say, you buy a thirty thousand dollar trailer, outfit it with forty-three thousand dollars worth of stuff, there's, and then insurance, you're talking a hundred thousand dollar trailer sitting there that probably never get used, but every year, it's going to get worse and worse. Twenty years from now, you're going to have to replace it with another hundred grand, so that's five thousand dollars a year, just, just for the trailer and the stuff that's in it. I mean, you look at how much Motorola charges for equipment. I mean, what if someone steals the equipment, then we're going to have to pay for it, or the insurance is probably going to be ungodly expensive to insure that kind of trailer. I mean, I, I just think that's a huge cost for the city residents to pay.
It's an umbrella insurance policy, it doesn't matter if they got ten squad cars or fifteen squad cars.
But they will increase our insurance premiums.
I don't think they would buy in a trailer. I mean, it's through League of Minnesota, Minnesota Cities, correct? Yeah, so it's, it's a blanket policy, doesn't matter. That doesn't affect the insurance.
But adding a hundred thousand dollars to your policy will cost you more money, no matter what. I don't, yeah, yes, it will, because they have to insure more items, so it's going to cost more money, but.
My, in my government experience, working for a government for twenty years, I've seen it.
They have umbrella policies, whether it's five or twenty.
I like the idea of sharing a trailer. If we're in a situation where all three cities need it at the same time, or we're in a bigger situation at that point anyway, and, and resources are going to have to be pooled together between everybody, they're going to have to work together no matter what.
It may not even be a trailer, because if you've got a big trailer, you're going to need a truck to pull it. It's going to have the truck.
Or a box truck or something along the lines.
Okay, but so at this point right now, we're, we're, we've got everything moving in the direction. We're looking at, at the county, we're looking at the, the grants, and we could potentially look at a partnership down the road if we, if we decide we want to look at that, so. Right, so we're kind of waiting on, just getting more information. Okay, awesome. Yeah, we want to maybe give staff some direction on that, that we'd like to at least maybe get the conversation started in that direction. If, well, I think the conversation's been started, I mean, we have a good partnership with Cambridge. I mean, that is, we have a working relationship with that, as well as the county. I mean, it's there, so it just, I know the question, just whether we're going to stand back and let a hundred percent rely on somebody else, or try to be somewhat self-sufficient. And I don't think we'd be a hundred percent, right, you know, like to the same level a county would be, but we have to have something, and that's what we've been working at for the last year and a half or so, because we haven't had anything to fall back on. Okay, yeah, no, I think that's, that's good. Any other questions on that? Alright, moving on to E seven then, the Heritage Boulevard lighting discussion.
Alright, so at the May sixteenth committee of the whole meeting, I was asked that staff reach out to Isani County to determine if they had any plans to add any additional lighting, or if they were interested in adding lighting and partnering with the city. The answer that we received from the county, Isani County engineer, was that they had no plans for additional lightings along Heritage, and they would be in favor of it for the city to add it, as long as the city paid for the cost to install and the maintenance. They, he said they were not interested at this time to do any kind of partnership or sharing in the cost. I did explain to him that it was not decorative lighting, and that it was for public safety, for both vehicular and pedestrians, and I didn't get anything further. So, at this time, we're looking for direction. It was, Matt Sylvester had supplied some information at that May cow about adding some additional lighting, some costs to put it on some existing poles that we had, and also potentially adding. And I think where we left off was, were those lights to be in addition to what we had already kind of planned for our lighting infill project, or is it to be in place of or added to next year's two thousand twenty-four budget? So, we're just looking at direction of the timeliness of when you'd like these lights done, if you still want them to be done. Currently, what we have for the plan was a light over by the mobile gas station and a light at Isani Parkway by the B M X facility. That's what's in the C I P light plan for this year.
So, I, I have a question. How many county roads go through the city limits of Isani?
Two main thoroughfares.
Okay, how many residents, how many residents in this city pay county taxes?
All of them.
So, I think it's kind of, that's kind of a kick that the county's not willing to participate in something like this, which is public safety, and all of our residents pay county taxes. And I, that's, I just wanted to say that, because I think that's kind of ridiculous. And I still think we should try and get something out there. I guess it's kind of our responsibility at this point, because they didn't want to step up at all. So, that's, that's my opinion. I would rather see them personally on Heritage versus those other two locations. I think Heritage is such a dangerous spot right now.
I do think that we will have potential for adding additional lighting if we do get some intersection control along Heritage and East Dual with the signal or the roundabout option. Either way, there will be lighting for pedestrian safety and vehicular safety there. But again, we are kind of at a standstill, we're waiting for the county to update that scope of work that was approved, waiting for their engineer that they're working with to get information back to us. I know that they took new traffic counts, but again, we're just waiting to hear what that data is going to show. Regardless of what that data shows, my understanding from the Isani County engineer is that they will not move it forward, that their plan to do Heritage or Casaw Five, and so we're looking at two thousand twenty-eight. So, if that is true, if that goes, follows suit with what they're thinking, again, that was in county board action recent, but then that lighting upgrade to that intersection wouldn't happen until that time, two thousand twenty-eight.
That's ridiculous.
That is ridiculous.
That's when Heritage Boulevard is planned for resurfacing?
Sorry, what was that?
That's when Heritage Boulevard is planned for resurfacing, so they tie it into that same project.
That's what the county engineer is thinking, that would be his recommendation.
I'm sure they will save money by tying it, the two projects together, but.
That's the highest, that's the highest.
I wonder how many times they sit at that intersection and try to get out onto five personally.
That's the highest traveled road.
Probably not very often, would be my guess.
That's the highest traveled county road in the whole county, and the fact that they're not willing to step up and do their jobs is kind of laughable at this point. It's a huge safety concern. I, I don't know what is going on at the county, but that's, that's really an insult to everybody that lives in the city and pays taxes, so.
Contact current.
Yep, I guess we'll have to.
Planning, or the county commissioners, start with A D, C L, start working there, because they're the ones that are going to be pushing it.
Well, Mike is.
Mike is, Mike has been here doing this and fighting for it the whole.
Yep, I know he has been, yep.
Alright, well, that's a discussion, I guess, for another day on that particular topic. But as far as the lighting infill that we can control, what, what do you guys think, so?
I still think we should put up at least a couple of lights, because you can always take them down and put them somewhere else. Try and choose the poles that might not be affected by the traffic control change. And then also, we did talk a couple of months ago about potentially reaching out to the owners of that strip mall, about their parking lot lights. I don't know if that, if that was an option, because their lights are so bright that it actually illuminates the sidewalk in the street.
So, we did look into some state statute about lighting, trespassing onto other properties and going to the right of way. And unfortunately, I think that the next step would be, which I haven't taken, and I can per your direction, is to reach out to the Isani County engineer and get their thoughts on allowing that light to overspill onto that, onto that sidewalk. Because right now, with our ordinance, we keep the lumens to that property and don't allow for that. So, if we were to enhance it, make it brighter, put a bigger Cobra head on it, so to say, is that something that the county's going to allow? It really is their jurisdiction.
You might kick their can, you'd be kicking a can down the road, because technically, their lights are overspilling onto their property, which now, in turn, could force them to changing their lights.
Yeah, I get it.
I, let's not kick that can. Now, you're taking a taxpayer and forcing cost on them where you don't want to force cost. So, I, I'd say leave that one well enough alone.
Okay, just government inefficiency when there's already an option there that's usable. It's kind of seems like it's silly not to use it. But I get what you're saying, Steve, you don't want to kick the can onto them and then have them.
Oh, not only that, but let's say their light burns out, well, then, are we going to tell them that, hey, can you go where it plays? I mean, we don't have control over that, you know, so I think it's our obligation to do what we can control, you know, so.
I was just trying to look for a temporary solution, because I was thinking the county would get this role on the next year or two, but obviously not, so.
Yeah, but I don't have any problem prioritizing our budget. I think we have eleven thousand dollars or something like that, and prioritizing that on that lighting on Heritage instead of on, on the other areas up there. I mean, there's, there's a lot of light by mobile, I mean, maybe not in that particular spot, but I mean.
Travis, what are, what are your thoughts on this? Have you looked at this map and maybe where do you think is the most important? I mean, you, you see it every day. You think Heritage is more important than the others, I mean, they're all important, obviously, but.
No, they're all important, but it's all about volume. You know, obviously, Elm Street, if there's somebody walking across Elm Street in the dark and a car is going by at that time, that would be really dangerous, because you're not expecting it, and you probably won't see it, right? But the volume, you know, the odds of that happening are less than the odds of the volume that, between pedestrians and traffic on five. We, I think everybody up there knows that, that five, the whole way through Isani and pedestrians is a concern.
I was driving today, and there was pedestrians, they were under the shade of a tree, and I didn't even, I mean, just they're out of the sunlight, you know. So, I mean, even there, it was hard to see them, you know, and that just, yeah, I agree.
So, I mean, the answer to your question, I mean, five would be for all, just because of the volume and the statistical volume that's there, yeah, whether it's daylight pedestrian issues, and the problem we have is we're dealing with the county, right, it's a county road, or at nighttime, so that would be as far as the most bang for your buck type thing.
And then with Dairy Queen opening too, it's going to be a lot more pedestrians. I know myself, I'll be walking there, so it's.
Can we have them mirror the lights that we're going to use in twenty-nine thirty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine thirty? And that way, we'll just designate those lights we put out here to be moved over to these other locations?
Or any location, really, yeah.
They might have to, I don't know, along the county road, I imagine, to be a certain height. I mean, we'll have to meet their codes, so.
Right, we would have to submit it for them for approval, but like I said, he did seem to be in favor of it, so. If we're looking at, we have twelve thousand three hundred and six allocated in this year's lighting infill in the C I P. So, if we look at adding the two lights at four hundred West Dual Boulevard and four oh one East Dual Boulevard, that's at Dual Square Mall, those are about a thousand dollars apiece to add to the existing pole. And then if we wanted one around three oh nine Heritage, we're looking at about three thousand dollars. So, that's under the budget number if we want to add those three, and then we can shift and move where the two were supposed to go this year, just bump them down, maybe not next year, but bump them into the plan, so they're done by twenty-thirty for sure, but.
That's basically a Nick and Drew's corner, that's a Quick Trip corner, or the Dual Square Mall corner, and then the elementary school, it's three oh nine, right? Yeah. That'd be a good start, I think.
And worst case, if that intersection does come sooner, or even if it does come five years down the road, we are moving a pole. But I think the relocation of a pole is a lot less expensive than installing a new pole. Yeah, there is some cost, if you were to say it could be wasted cost if you look at it that way, but that does give you five years of more public safety.
I would like to see something between Quick Trip and McDonald's as well. I don't know if the, the one that's already outlined, two thousand twenty-eight or two thousand twenty-six. I mean, I, I would like to see it along that whole stretch, because there is going to be more people walking that direction, I think, with the Dairy Queen and whatever else comes in those vacant lots on the west side of Dairy Queen and Alina. And then there's another lot, I mean, there's a bunch of lots over there that are going to get developed. So, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't, I think it's kind of pennies when you're looking at the budget and how important it could be potentially. Is anybody else in favor of putting some, or maybe one more at least, between Quick Trip and McDonald's?
I'm trying to open my page here to see what the cost was on that, that, the four oh one East Dual was eleven sixteen, right? I have that one written down already, but how much was the one at Nick and Drew's there, if we?
Three thousand.
It was three thousand? I don't know why this isn't opening, I had it, I had it open earlier, but, and then the one at, do you have that on the three oh nine?
I think that was.
And three oh nine is by Minco, just for clarity.
Oh, it is Minco, it's not, not the elementary school?
It's the lot right next, the empty lot next to Minco, just to the west of Minco. So, it would be illuminating the intersection of where that route, that intersection control would be at East Dual. Hold on, that's Credit Union Drive. Never mind, that's Credit Union Drive, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it is the elementary school is three oh nine?
I mean, is this something that we could have the engineer look at and give his input on which ones might be the best? The most cost-effective, say, if we, say, we put up four, and then maybe they have to do some sort of research on where there'd be the most cost-effective and least chance of them getting moved by traffic control changes?
Connectus will help with that too.
Okay, sure.
So, it'll probably be the ones that install.
Okay.
Would be my guess.
Sure.
But if that three oh nine is by the elementary school, I mean, I think you might be right, that it might be, I mean, that doesn't get a lot of.
I think he meant Credit, I think he meant the one over by the middle, or by that intersection, though, right, or?
I think one, one twenty is the subway one, is the, the one that's doing twenty, twenty-seven is that one. That's. But I mean, I, I don't disagree with you, Luke, that maybe we wanted, instead of doing the one further down, you know, we do one more between McDonald's and Quick Trip.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have a cost, or well, actually, I think we do have a cost on those ones.
If it requires a new pole, which I feel like when Jason was here as well, Jason and Matt discussed those lighting going from that intersection over to McDonald's, there weren't any existing poles that we could put it on. So, it's going to be roughly that three thousand dollars, I believe.
I mean, can we leave it up to Jason and the staff to decide which lights might, which the most cost-effective option for that intersection for temporary, or that, that street?
And we're looking for not to exceed the twelve thousand three oh six that we have currently budgeted, moving those current lights that are in the plan for this year out into the future years, not to exceed twenty-thirty, and getting the most that we can. It's possible, we can put together a plan and even ask Connectus, depending where they're located, we might be able to have some savings doing them together in a certain geography and stuff too, so, yeah.
All I'm going to tell you is you're, you're asking the wrong guy about lights. I've been on here for thirteen years, I've been pushing for more streetlights no matter where. That's always been my thing in finishing sidewalk on Whiskey Road. I've been after that and lights this whole time I've been on council. If, lights are important, I get it. At what cost do you want to put them in? There was a plan that got deviated from and got changed when times got tough. There was an infill for lights, and money was put away for that, and that money disappeared, because it was used for other things. So, I've always been very public safety orientated. So, if you want to put lights, go for it, I don't care. I, I, I believe it needs to be done. I think also we need to be pushing harder and harder and harder for those stoplights. Especially with Main Street being shut down, I actually had to turn, go out to sixty-five, and I had to go to U P S yesterday, left Minco, I had to turn, go out to sixty-five, down to Kajuma, and come in the back way to U P S, because there was no way I was crossing to turn and go on Dual Boulevard. That, it was literally impossible.
Yeah, that's horrible.
And it's, that's just showing with that happening. And it's not any better when this isn't shut down.
Yep, it's the busiest road in Isani County, the county commissioners have told me that, but they.
But they say that, but they want to do other stupid things.
Exactly, yeah. Yep, exactly.
You'll have a nice drive up to Blue Lake now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When? Ain't done yet.
All right, so do we wanna kind of throw this back in Jason's court, tell him we want to prioritize the Heritage Boulevard area there by Quick Trip, McDonald's, and stay within budget, and then bring it back to council on the second of August?
Yes.
Get it, get it pushed through, I know we've been working on this a long time and talking about it forever.
I think we should get updated costs, so we might not be able to make it to the August second because we'll have to wait for Conexus.
Okay.
These numbers were collected before that May cow, so I think we should just get revised numbers, make sure that we're not, you know, ask you a couple grand here, there.
As long as they're close.
Yeah.
So I think we'll get new costs and worst case, maybe the second meeting in August, but we'll.
Okay, but go, the next time we talk about it, we should vote on it and be done with it, okay.
Yes.
As long as we ain't getting kicked in the shorts, if we have to pay more for the lights, we have to pay more for the lights. Regardless, it doesn't matter, as long as there ain't doubling the cost on them.
Right.
It's, it's for public safety, hundred percent, so.
All right, sounds good, so moving on to E eight text notification options.
All right, so we were asked to provide information, so I reached out to five different companies for text notification. I did ask for both emergency text notification as well as just informational text, the, some companies do look at those differently. So what you see before you is a table from the five different companies, if they allow for non-emergency texting, this would be if you wanted to push out something about a council meeting or a special meeting or an event, there's gonna be extra congestion due to the rodeo and extra six thousand people, things like that. You can see that all of them do allow for that here, but some, two, Rave and Red Flag allow, or do give you an additional cost. Three included at no additional cost. Text notification via email, or having email as a second option, all but one did that. So if that was of interest of council, ability to use it internally, they all allowed that, and I will tell you, it was pretty cool to see some of them when I did these demos, so for example, if there was an emergency situation that we needed to set up an incident command center, and we wanted, or Chief Myers wanted to get everyone on a call, all of his team all at once, he can have it set up as a group in there to send a notification to him via them, via text, they can click on the link and will automatically call him, and it will merge everyone together on one conference call. I thought, well, that's pretty slick. There is also the ability to, if we have a water main break and Public Works on call needs to call in all the staff because we need everyone. The Public Services Director can send out one text that goes to everyone and they can respond back on some of these apps, which was super cool. Because making sure people even got that, I will tell you, even for snowplow calling, you're calling everyone, you know, and it's nice if you could send out automatic, and some of the companies did voice, so he could record his voice, asking to come in for a snowplow emergency, one recording shoots it out to everybody, so kind of cool things like that. All of them had the ability to do geo fencing, a couple of them, if I step back, had the report to us. So if it was of interest of council to have either on our website or via text, people could send in where they saw a pothole, and we wanted to route that to Public Works to fill. I know some cities, bigger cities typically have those report to me or fix it tickets type things. The one cool thing about Text My Gov is they have where you set up automatic notifications, and I did it as a trial, and it was super cool. I text the word, and you can set up tons of words, said pothole, I text it to the number and you get a dedicated number. It asked me where is it, the address, can you upload a picture, automatically, it just does that, so that was pretty cool, kind of AI technology. And it can automatically be routed to Public Works, so there actually isn't anyone involved, you could set it up for frequently asked questions, so it limits the phone calls that you take at City Hall, kind of a cool feature. You'll see for text quantities, it varies, some were high, some were unlimited, one was pretty low, sixty-eight hundred. And then you see the implementation costs and then annual costs, I do have some other features and information down below. One of them I mentioned about Text My Gov, a rave, the rave one does allow for people to set up a profile in Smart nine-one-one, and I'm not sure if Isani County is a member of that. But for example, if someone was dispatched to a home and the county was, or we were, you would get maybe information if they put their medical information, like they had, were diabetic or had seizures or something like that. Just something that they, they offer. They have, let's see, text notifications cost forty-four cents each, if you go over that sixty-eight hundred, that was quoted at three thousand a year. Red Flag, their cost per year of four thousand was only for five hundred subscribers, so it goes up beyond that, that one I think kind of kicks out right away because that's pretty expensive for such a small number. Everbridge, so Isani County does use Everbridge, I got a quote from them, which would be about four thousand dollars a month. I did ask them if the county was willing to have us piggyback on that, if we would receive a reduction, and he said yes. It could be as low as five hundred dollars a month, but there's a lot of logistics, and you end up having to share information, so it all.
Annually or monthly, though?
Annual.
Annually, okay.
But it all depends on if the county wants to have us basically piggyback on their system. It would take away from their numbers of what they have for subscribers, so we'd have to look into those logistics further. So things to consider would be funding, this is an unbudgeted expense, I do think that depending on which provider we would go with, if we did choose one, we can spread it out among many departments because I think there's a lot of valuable tools for lots of different reasons, not just emergency. Who would be the point person to initiate it? And those that are interested in the service, you do have to have residents or whoever subscribe to it. They would need to opt in, some offer widgets that we can put on our website, some didn't. But when they opt in, then they can get the notification, sign up for certain ones, some of them offered where you could break it apart. But you have to allow them to opt out. We, we can't sign people up.
So what did you think of Civic Ready, Josie?
What's that?
Civic Ready, what did you think of that one?
That is one, I, I got quote, quoted information, but I did not do the demo beyond the videos that they sent. So I do think it had a lot of potential, I like that it integrated in with our website, they do have good customer service. So if we have issues with their website, that's nice to know. Some of the other ones like Everbridge, they don't include any customer support without charging you service hours. That's why I didn't put a dollar amount in there because it's hard to know what that's gonna cost you, because how long's it gonna take to solve the question or the problem?
And but with Civic Ready, we wouldn't have to do that see, click, fix, spend that extra five thousand on that, right?
You don't have to, that was an additional service.
I don't know about you guys, but I think Civic Ready looks like it's pretty much a pretty good thing to do. And, you know, you think about that twenty-five hundred implication cost of three fifty, you know, that's not a lot of money to spend to get a lot of information out to people. If they sign up for it.
That's the only thing I would say is that if they, if it's not something where we can just kind of capture data or buy a list, that how many people does the county have signed up?
I did get that information from Everbridge, I think I, I can pull it up, but I believe, I've topped my head, out of their, what are they, forty-four thousand population, I think there were twenty-nine thousand, it was actually pretty high.
Well, that's twenty, that high?
I, I think that's what they put in their email to me, which I find kind of skeptical, one of the other companies told me that if you get ten percent, you're doing really great.
Yeah, that doesn't sound, I bet you, I bet you it's twenty-nine hundred. Yeah, that sounds morally realistic, but that would be my only thought is, I, I probably wouldn't be interested in spending the money because I just don't think a lot of people are gonna sign up for it, you know, I think if it's something where we, if we have to send something and we can buy a list that we only use when we absolutely need to and we only pay per text, you know, when we need it, that's something I would be in favor of, but having to spend an annual cost and having people that have to opt in to do it, that I don't.
But then if they opt into it, they can't complain about getting the message.
Well, no, you're right, but.
If you buy a list and you're sending things to people, that was one of the things that irritated me about the campaigning.
Yeah.
You drove by a certain area, all of a sudden your phone went nuts and there's these, oh, vote for me, like, I didn't want this.
Right.
That, if I chose to have it, that's a different story.
No, I, I agree with you there, but I think it's, it's in an emergency situation, if you want to hit everybody and you're only gonna, you're gonna pay this much money to only hit the people that opt in, which is gonna be, like she said, ten percent, so we're talking, maybe you're gonna hit seven hundred people if you're lucky.
You may, you may think that you're gonna spend, it's gonna be cheap when you pay per text. Goes right through the rug.
Oh, but you're not, hopefully you won't have to use it very often, I mean, how often do you really have to use it?
No.
That's my point, is that if you're paying an annual fee, I mean, that's.
Depends on what you want to use it for.
Yeah, if you're only gonna use it for.
If people let Main Street's close for two weeks.
So Josie, with the.
I don't know that we would need to notify them about that, that'd be kind of annoying, wouldn't it, I mean.
Some people might find it handy, some people would find it annoying, but you know what, then they can text and stop.
Right.
And they won't receive them anymore.
So Josie, with the Civic Ready, I know you discussed about some of these companies have things that would help the city staff, does Civic, I, I might have missed, does Civic Ready have the, the cool options to, like Matt could send a text to the all employees, or is that, or is that just the Text My Gov, which was better with that?
Text My Gov did that as well as Rave did that. I'm not sure about the Civic Ready.
Okay, now looking at these and just based on what you said, I would, I mean, if we're gonna choose between one of the two, it would be Text My Gov or Civic Ready, I think the other three can kind of be tossed. But I think the other option for having, you know, adding more value to it than just a text would be pretty handy. But I don't know if it's necessarily worth it for city staff, I don't know.
I'm with the mayor on this, unless we can figure out a way to get a majority of the residents to sign up, being creative, whether that is five percent off on your ticket to Illuminati Isani, all of our events, or even a dollar off on a water bill for a month or two dollars, whatever, because it would not be effective enough unless we have a vast majority of the residents sign up. I mean, twenty-nine, or, you know, if we get fifteen percent, I don't, I don't see the value of it, other than what Josie said where she could use it for mass texting and emergency response, but which has value, but I don't know if it's worth that much.
I mean, even ten percent, say if we get a list that's ten percent, that ten percent's gonna talk to another ten percent, and it's kind of, you know, stuff is, like, look at the news. Only probably ten percent of the people listen to the news or watch the news, but then we all hear about it, I mean, it's, I think it might be worth it, it's.
I mean, Steve, I think Steve is right that if you, depending on what you use it for, I mean, if you're gonna use it to tell them about street projects or that kind of thing, I mean, then, then, yeah, you're right, I mean, it will take.
Or events.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna really pound it home on, on that, you know, but then are we better off just using Facebook anyway?
Well, the problem is a lot, well.
And I'm, I mean, I hear you, because I'm not on Facebook very often.
Yeah, you get the same problem with, a lot of people that are on Facebook really don't use.
Yeah, right.
Phone.
So you're gonna, you're gonna hit the same people again, yeah.
It's an idea, I think it's something we can just keep in the back burner and look at, maybe pursuing at another time, but I think it's something to look at.
Everybody's cell phone today receives, can receive text messages.
Right.
I think it'll, I think it'd hit more than Facebook would, because everybody has texting, so I mean, I think it might be worth it, just even if we were to get a list at you know, the street dances and just send out little stuff for parks and rec, you know, that would be a, get more numbers at their parks and rec stuff, so it's actually putting more value to the programs and stuff we put on.
In a way, it sounds to me they could sign up for certain things that they don't want to, they don't want to see that information.
Right.
Obviously, you wouldn't give them an option on emergency reasons, but you know, do you want to get updated on park and rec, you want to get upgraded on this? I mean, those things, and I guess I, you know, personally, I would have it all signed up, if I don't like to message, I'd just delete it, you know.
And then if, if you think about it, you know, these people that are gonna want to sign up for this are gonna be the ones that are gonna advocate for the city, like, say, if, if I wasn't on city council, you damn well bet I would be signing up for this, and if I saw a pothole, I would report it in this, and I think that's a, a good resource for people to even just feel more involved and like to have more of a say in what's going on, because the people that are gonna sign up for it are gonna be the ones that are gonna be reporting stuff that would, which would help us. So I think it's a pretty low cost even, just make people feel like they're a bigger part of the community. Twenty-five hundred dollars is not that much money.
Things like if you were looking to get out ordinance changes, like we talked about, like the sprinkler, the irrigation, what, even odd, people lived here for a long time, they don't know about it.
Right.
It's an opportunity, if they want to subscribe to that, those type of texts.
Is that something that we could do, emergency type funding grant? Does it, I mean, we'd be doing it mainly for emergencies, but could also do other things with it.
But if we needed it under emergency stuff, we would have to piggyback onto Everbridge, because I wouldn't think it would be in our best emergency management interest to go with a second vendor within the county.
I guess I would, I would vote to go with the Civic Ready, I, I don't really like spending money, but I think this is something that could be valuable for residents and the city staff. So I would, I'll make a motion to, or this, you can't make a motion, yep. I'd like to bring it to city council then, I guess.
August second.
You have, like, maybe you said you didn't have a chance to demo it?
No, that's one I need to schedule a full demo, I had some demo videos, but not a full demo to ask all the questions and look at all the details.
It'd be nice if you could bring that demo video in, that we can see it, kind of.
Yeah.
I can email it out to you as well, and we can record the, the tutorial going through, and I can submit or send that all out to you via email.
Yep.
And this is what we'll, we'll budget this in for next year?
Potentially, we could, yeah. Okay, so we want to bring that for more discussion at the August second meeting then?
Okay.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and we've got one more thing.
I think you'd talk about this.
I don't know, so I've got a resident that asked me about a bank of mailboxes, he's had problems for a long time, I know he had talked with, with some officers as well about it, but they're parking on both sides of this bank of mailboxes on Park Brook, and he's having trouble getting his mail on a regular basis, we don't have any ordinances in place that say that they can't park in front of the mailboxes, and I think you probably don't want that, because that could really get to be a hairy situation in a lot of areas where it is okay to park by the mailbox and it doesn't become a problem. But this particular case, it sounds like it's been going on for a long time. You know, is there a way that we could maybe just say no parking on that specific spot, just like we've done, you know, on certain areas of streets and stuff like that, or, you know, maybe just kind of a dress it as, as needed basis, or?
Isn't it illegal to park in front of a mailbox, that's a federal offense.
I would think so, but it is not, it's not state or federal.
No, it's not, we looked into it about a year or two ago about the same issue, and it's not. Feds don't have anything and the state doesn't, some cities have ordinances.
If you don't want your mail, I guess park in front of your mailbox. Can we yellow curb it? Can we just paint it yellow so that means?
No, you couldn't, I mean, if, just on a whole, if you're ever gonna go down the ordinance topic, you either have to do it, you can't park in front of a mailbox, period. Yeah, I mean, that would be just. You can't have times, dates, that just doesn't work. How about, how about just a yellow paint?
I think that's what we should do is put an ordinance that no parking before and after mailboxes within a car length. I mean, that's, I guess I would be irritated if I couldn't get my mail because some jack wagon.
Yeah, how many, how many spots could you, could you park where it wouldn't be in the way though, and it's within a car length, and it's?
I think you're, I think that there may be some upset residents who live in cul-de-sacs and you just don't get that much space in between the driveway and the mail, one mailbox.
Could we just do, I, I think George is on it, I mean, could we just paint that curb yellow in front of that particular mailbox and call it good?
I think that if you want to add that to, to Public Works plate, I think that would be quite a bit, because if, unless you're just doing the bank mailboxes where you have five or more.
I'm just talking about that one particular bank on, on Park Brook.
Well, I don't know how you do it for them and not the other banks, because we have those all over.
Well, maybe we do it as, as needed basis.
I'm with you.
Nobody, nobody else is complaining about it.
Know what the yellow curb means.
Well, what do you mean?
The people that park there, they're not gonna notice all of a sudden the curb is yellow and they.
Technically, I think we should add, we would add that to the ordinance.
All right.
Further discussion. I guess I would, the guy, has the guy approached his neighbors who was parking there?
Or could they put up no parking signs, or some, don't park in front of my mailbox on their property?
They do that at work.
I mean, is it?
The landscapers can't read English, so it was put in.
I don't know if it's on his property or not, just.
Not picking on them, don't get me wrong, I'm not picking on them, but they had to do that because they were parking in front of the mailbox and they weren't getting the mail. Because, but I always thought it was illegal to park in front of a mailbox.
I did too, just common sense.
Yeah, you would think. Don't park there, yeah.
It's just like you don't park in front of someone's driveway.
Well, here, do we want to add this, we want to maybe get this meeting started and maybe add this particular topic to tonight's council agenda, we can wrap that up?
Yes, we can add that to discussion this evening.
Okay, let's do that, because that was the last thing on there, so, all right, so do we need a motion to add that, or we'll just?
No, we'll just motion to adjourn.
Do the agenda, okay, so I'll just take the motion to adjourn, I got a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero, we are adjourned.